Good evening and welcome to the public hearing before the business meeting of June 26, 2025. I'm going to open up the public hearing portion of our meeting for the review of the District Code of Conduct and the district-wide safety plan for any community comments. There's no community here. Dr. Luff said he did not get any questions that needed to be answered.
So, I did get feedback from one community member who had reviewed the plan and had shared some questions. None of the questions are relevant to the specific plan, although he did give me some items to follow up on regarding sort of general safety, mostly entirely as it relates to the installation of the solar farm next door and potential safety hazards associated with that, but nothing that would directly go--
But does that affect our-- doesn't affect our safety plan?
No, I mean, the questions he had asked, we already have a protocols board, like emergency evacuation routes and stuff like that. There's other things that we need to follow up on--
Okay.
--but nothing that would directly influence our plan.
Okay. And the code of conduct, how does that get distributed to--
Well, that's in the code of conduct.
We're doing them both now. I opened them both for public comment.
So, the code of conduct is in the student general rights, their handbook they sign every year.
And parents sign off on it as well. And parents sign.
Yep, and that's done through a Google form for, is it all of the schools, Dr. Luff?
Yes.
I know, okay. So, parents are made aware of the code of conduct via email, and parents have to sign off that they have received it.
And students at the high school also, or the middle school also? I don't think they do it--
The middle school students have to sign off on it.
Yeah, middle school, high school, yeah.
Yeah, middle school, high school.
All right. I know there's things there for staff, too. Does staff have to sign off?
Staff when they're hired, sign off on that.
Okay.
How do you make it available if there are changes for the staff to know that there are changes?
It's always available online, and if there's any substantial changes, we would just make them recertified. So, we could check with our attorneys whether they need to recertify at this time around.
So, the one that we're going to approve will be the one that the parents and the students will see in September?
Correct.
Okay, good, good, great.
That's the reason why the resolution is leaving the second reading?
Yes.
So, to give us an opportunity to get that--
Distributed.
Distributed out.
And we're going to check to see if staff needs to recertify based on the changes?
Yes.
I think it's great, I'm part of the middle school steering committee, and I think it's great that the middle, at the middle school steering committee, we went over the code of conduct to see if there were any suggestions that we had. I thought it was really, I'm sure they do it at all the steering meetings--
Yeah, each building steering committee has that opportunity. Essentially, everyone had their own document, they made their own comments, and then I culated all of those comments into a single document. Then we resolved those comments with help of the policy board. That completed document is what is now before the board.
I think it's great that you got input from each school and parents, community members, teachers, staff.
And did they get it at the high school building steering also?
I believe it was a part of the process. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend those meetings, but I believe Dr. Luff said all three steering committees--
All three buildings had--
--were able to do that.
Great.
Recession, and we'll come back at seven o'clock.
Yeah, so, since there's nobody here to make comments, we are going to recess and come back to the business meeting at seven o'clock. Thank you. Good evening. I'm reconvening the business meeting of June 26, 2025. We took a brief, we opened it up at 6:45 to talk about the district's code of conduct and the district-wide safety plan. There were no comments from the audience, so now we are reconvening our meeting. We're going to stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll first open it up for public comment on agenda items. Okay. The treasurer's report for April 2025 is available in the business office. So, the first thing we're going to do is the consent agenda. Sam?
Okay, resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve Agenda Items 2 through 10 as contained on the consent agenda for this meeting.
Second, questions or comments?
The consent agenda includes approval of the previous meeting minutes, CSE/CPSE placements, approval for additional unpaid hours for various staff members, and the postseason stipends for the spring coaches, approving several contracts and agreements, one with Chub Insurance Company, one with the Construction Trade Services, which is renewal of the bid. This company is called SRT Construction, a bid renewal for boilers and related equipment, which is first heating solutions, and the water system operator renewal of that bid, which is Lumar Plumbing, approving a leave of absence for a teacher in a specific tenure area, approving the 2025 ESY program staffing, approving additional summer workers to work in the technology and in the facilities department, amending the time for the reorganizational meeting for the Board of Education for next Tuesday, July 1st, to 8:00 a.m., and approving budget transfers over $25,000 for the period May 21st through June 24th, 2025.
Any other comments?
Just a quick comment, two things. Dr. Luff, if you could please explain what an ESY is for the public and also the leave of absence. That is not a true absence. Can you explain that, please, also, for the public?
Sure. So, ESY is the Extended Year Program. That's a program that some students have on their IEPs, which is Individualized Education Plan. So, it's students where the, we believe that there would be too much regression over the summer if we didn't continue to provide instructional services. So, those students receive those services from our own staff and clinicians over the summer for the extended school year program. And, oh, the leave of absence? So, in order for a student to, in order for an employee to accrue seniority in any certification or tenure area, they must be at least, must represent at least 40% of their caseload. So, we've had several teachers over the past few years that were split with 60% in one tenure area, 40% in another. If scheduling doesn't allow that to happen and they drop below that 40%, we ask them to simply take a leave for that tenure area. So, while Mr. England is still a full-time teacher in our middle school, he's not doing 40% of his work in the tenure of social studies, and therefore is just taking a leave from accruing additional seniority there.
So, they're still--
If he's still here 100% of his day, so he's probably, in his case, he's also a special education teacher, so his course load next year is probably 80% special education, 20% social studies. That's not enough to accrue seniority, so therefore he will accrue seniority in special education, not social studies. But if the following year he were to return to 40% of his caseload being social studies, he would pick back up where he left off.
Okay, thank you.
It's a pause, pausing it because it doesn't represent 40% of his work.
Right. Thank you.
My only other comment is, Mrs. Bellino, you don't have to do this again.
I don't.
Thank you for all the times you've read them.
Very well.
We appreciate it.
I already started this already.
You have days left, days.
We had a moment the other day--
How many hands?
Two, two days. But that's plural.
I got out--
Still got an S.
I got out of my mouth the other day. I'm like, do you know-- Don't even say it, don't say it, just go in your--
Don't discuss it.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Abstentions? The resolutions pass. Okay, our presentations tonight are on the code of conduct and the district's safety plan.
So, prior to us convening the business meeting, we held a public hearing for both the district's safety plan and our code of conduct. There was no additional comments for either. Both have been vetted through the appropriate safety committee, as well as the policy committee and all the building steering committees for the code of conduct, and will appear before the board for resolution later this evening.
Okay. Our students are not here this evening, but--
I can't believe they didn't come back.
I know.
Slacker.
I have to say, Aiden Cassidy, Haley Cron, and Melissa--
Marissa.
Marissa Car Turo, you know, I wrote each of them a note and just said, like, how really important it is for us to hear their input, their ideas, their suggestions, their comments, their reflections on how a student feels about many of the things that we do. Those reflections and those sharings do guide our work and help us to focus on what we need to focus on, which is student achievement. So, I really appreciate their work this year for them coming to meetings. I know how difficult it is that girls were both really involved in the play and other things. But whenever they were here, they added so much to our meeting, and I'm just, I'm really grateful. We have some great people for next year, and I think, you know, I'm so pleased that Putnam Valley started this before, again, before it was a state mandate. We thought it was important, so. Does anybody have any other comments about the students?
Especially Aiden. He persevered right through the year. He was great.
Okay.
Thank you for the service.
Thank you for the service, yep. None of them, I think, this year were IB students, so they didn't do, like, CAS presentations because we gave, last year we gave students a hard time about not using this to show service to their community, and I hope that the three of them at least used it for college applications or whatever they needed to fill out. But, you know, it means a lot to give back to your community in whatever ways you can, so we do appreciate their support. All right, Dr. Luff, since nothing's been happening at school over the last two weeks, what do you have to report?
We're finally catching our breath. So, I want to talk a little bit about earlier this week, obviously, the district and, well, the region experienced the heat wave, and while Putnam Valley made a decision that was very different than many of our neighbors, and I wanted to talk a little bit about why that decision was made and the thought that went into it. So, over the weekend, I was in communication with superintendents from across the region. I knew many of them planned to shift to half-days, and I never really entertained the thought because, one, I'm well aware of the fact that Putnam Valley is unique in many ways. One way in particular is having central air conditioning throughout all three of our buildings, and while other districts said they had air conditioning, I'm not sure they have it in the same capacity in which we do. In fact, some of those who tried to stay open with their existing air conditioning found out that it was unable to maintain the level of comfort that we were here. So, it's something that we brag about, we tout, we receive rewards based upon our installation of geothermal wells and our ability to heat and cool our building without any fossil fuels. So, it felt very counterintuitive for me to say, even though we have central air conditioning, I'm going to send hundreds of kids home to houses that do not have air conditioning, and I'm going to ask hundreds of parents to now take off of work so they can care for their children that were forcing out of otherwise air-conditioned buildings. So, it didn't really make a whole lot of sense to me. There was obviously concerns about transportation. We discussed those concerns as well. Our large buses do not have air conditioning, and, but again, that was, in conversations I had with transportation, I was on a bus parked at the elementary school waiting for students on Monday when it was 96 degrees outside, talking to the drivers. We came to the realization that if we had dismissed at 12:00 rather than 3:00, it may have been 2 or 3 degrees cooler on that bus, but it was not going to be anything substantially different. We did change how we do drop-off and arrival. We minimized the amount of time that students were on stopped school buses. So, our entire morning procedure, where we parked the buses in their spots and we dismissed the students at the same time in the elementary school, or where we hold buses outside of the middle school until arrival time, that was entirely changed for those days. As soon as buses arrived, students were able to disembark and enter the building, and I thank all of those support staff, administrators, and teachers that helped facilitate that, as well as dismissal. We expedited the dismissal process to ensure that buses, the students were not sitting on stopped school buses for a long period of time. I'm happy to report, each day we transported well over 1,000 students to and from school on school buses and had zero health issues. Associated with that, we also transported students to Danbury and Poughkeepsie for school trips. On Wednesday, on Tuesday, we had students at the town park in the morning. I was there with them. Again, we took all the precautions and steps necessary, but we weren't forced to alter what our educational instructional plans were for those days. So, I just wanted to let everyone know that it wasn't, it wasn't a surprise to us. It wasn't like we were unaware it was going to be 100 degrees on Tuesday, but we did have these conversations, and we made a decision that we thought was in the best interest of our students, the best interest of our families, and the best interest of our staff. So, those, that was the thinking or the rationale that went into the decision. I did receive one single email from a parent who was upset that we did not dismiss early. I can promise you, if I hadn't announced an early dismissal, I would have received probably 100 times that number one email. So, I'm glad everything worked out, but I did want to get it out there in the public that it wasn't a decision that we made on a whim or something that we didn't consider or caught by surprise. It was something that we thought out, planned, made changes, and executed. Regarding the "nothing's been happening in our schools" comment, so at the high school, we had our Hall of Fame and Hall of Fame and Student Athletic Awards induction. I want to thank Rob Webb and his staff for putting that together, all of our coaches and students. We inducted four new members to the Hall of Fame. I know the evening went on a little longer than anticipated, but I know that changes are already in the works for upcoming years, and we had an amazing high school graduation out here on the baseball field. It'll probably be one of the five best weather days of the entire year, so you could imagine the comments I would have received if we were in the pack. I was glad that it was able to work out, and the setup was amazing, the weather was amazing, the students looked great, and I thought the ceremony went fantastic and quick. So, congratulations to all those students in the class of 2025, congratulations to their parents, families, friends, and everyone else. For anyone who really loved the setup on the baseball field, it's still going back to the turf next year. Sorry. At our elementary school, we had our Flag Day celebration. All the students stand around the circle with a flagpole in the middle and sing patriotic songs and take pictures. It was, Ben Derlin was out there with his guitar, leading the way, and it's always a fantastic event for our students. Our senior walk was held at the high school. I made mention of it during my fourth grade moving up speech, that those fourth graders were eight short years away from wearing the cap and gown to return to Putnam Valley Elementary School to walk the hallways and thank their teachers. We did extend it a few years back to also include the middle school, so those seniors also walked through the middle school for their cap and gown celebration.
Nice.
Kindergarten show is probably the favorite activity of the entire year. There's nothing better than five and six-year-olds standing in the front of the stage singing to their families. There's always discipline issues resulting from family behavior because everyone wants to stand up and wave, getting in other families' ways and forcing their poor children to wave back when they're supposed to be singing. So, we try to give a stern talking to all the family members before the students arrive, but that's always the challenge, is to get the parents to stop waving to the kids and standing up so they--
We are the worst listeners.
Thank you for experiencing.
Elementary school also held the end of the year, at the elementary school, we held our end-of-the-year family picnic, so I know that was open to everyone, well-attended. I want to thank our community liaisons for putting that together. And our elementary school had their field day. Again, it was beautiful weather that day, students bouncing around between activities. We lucked out and had it planned on the Friday. I know other districts had to change their date. We got lucky for our initial date, and it was fantastic weather for that event. And then our elementary school held their moving up ceremony yesterday. All the days start blending together. So, the air conditioning held strong, and even though there was a five-minute lapse, which I got nervous about, but it held strong, again, very well-attended, and a great event for everyone. Middle school, we had invited two. New Horizons had their summer party, so our New Horizons class invited family, friends, and faculty in, and we got to see their, the students received awards and were able to spend some quality time with family. And faculty member, actually, our elementary school did as well. Gina's class came and did a performance for their families in the auditorium. And again, end-of-year activities for that class, sort of their own separate show, and also handed out awards to those students. Middle school had their end-of-year trips. Eighth grade went to Lake Compounds on Monday. Which grade? Sixth grade went to the town park on Tuesday, and fifth and seventh grade went to bounce and indoor activity places on Wednesday. And our eighth grade moving up ceremony was last night, so all the eighth graders moved up last night in the pack. Again, very well-attended. I want to commend the two students, Liam and Trevor, who spoke on behalf of the class as the class co-presidents, and congratulate them as they make their transition to the high school. For anyone who has tried to walk on our track or play on our turf, they don't exist right now, so I wanted to give a quick update. We have finished, obviously, all of the turf has been removed, the milling machine has come in and milled up all of the blocktop, the track, the fencing, all of that stuff is gone, so we remain on schedule. They're now working on sort of the more nuanced stuff, adding drainage, preparing that D-zone on the far end of the field for turf, adding drainage there, and really getting ready to start the, rather than the destruction phase, we're getting ready to start the construction phase. So, I know in a couple of weeks, we expect the turf to arrive, they hope to start doing all of the paving, and we remain on time to have that project complete by the fall, whether cooperating, hopefully. Same with Capitol Project. We've started our Capitol Project work, so again, our hope is to start some of that project for the summer of '26. We're meeting with architects, actually, the architects and our school nurses had a meeting the other day to talk about some of the, some of the plans for that nurse's office at the elementary school, and Dave and myself have meetings set up with appropriate staff members and engineers for the HVAC system, for the parking lot, engineering piece, playground, and others. So, that work, while not real exciting, it's lots of drawings, technical drawings, and conversations and plans, is the first step in getting to the fun stuff, which is the actual construction phase. Just a quick reminder, there are a few families that still need to register for universal pre-K. The vast majority have already completed, so, but the window for that registration closes on Monday. Any students who have not completed that registration will be replaced with students on the waitlist. So, if you're out there and still have not completed registration, please do so. I want to thank those who did. It's been a pretty seamless process. I know Danielle and Michael in our office have facilitated that registration, and they've been pleased with people's preparedness when they show up to complete that registration. A reminder, obviously, today and tomorrow are half-days at the elementary school and the middle school, and I would be remiss not to mention the fact that this is, in fact, Maureen and Natalie's last board meeting. So, I know we've had opportunity to celebrate them both, but I did want to at least acknowledge it, and while I will be lost and potentially fired soon after Maureen leaves, Natalie has been my right-hand person for many years, I will miss you both, and thank you for your many years of service to our school district. Thank you.
So, you're going to do anything fun? No. Anything fun. Okay. Next on the agenda is a board discussion about the volunteer firefighter and ambulance workers' tax exemption.
So, I guess I'll segue you guys then, and then you can talk. So, this is something that we've discussed in public before. We know we had the volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers come to a meeting and make the request. This is something that the district has offered for a long period of time, but to a lesser level. We, the law has changed, that sort of has been updated, and what my recommendation is, is that we follow that update to allow up to a 10% tax exemption for active-duty volunteer firefighters and ambulance corps members. There's really two pieces of the law in which need to be decided on by the board tonight, and these are sort of the last two things we need to decide regarding this exemption before it appears as a resolution before the board. We did do analysis as requested by the board. We were given rosters for active-duty firefighters and rosters for active-duty ambulance corps members. We went with the assumption that everyone on there qualifies. That will not be the case. You have to be a homeowner, you have to have so many years of active service in order to qualify. That's information I don't have, or should I? But we based it on assuming everyone on that list does qualify, what would that cost the other taxpayers? So, I believe the number for the firefighters was about $10 a year, so that would cost other taxpayers $10 more a year if every firefighter qualified for that exemption. When we added the ambulance corps on, it went from $10 to $14 a year.
So, 14 in total?
14 in total, assuming every person on that roster qualifies every year. That would be the maximum tax impact on other taxpayers in our community if everybody qualified. $14 a year. So, the two items that we need to discuss this evening, or the board needs to discuss this evening are, the first is what's the minimum eligibility period? So, how many years of active service do you need before you qualify? The law allows us to decide between two and five years of active service in order to initially qualify. That's the first piece. The second piece is, the law allows for you to essentially be grandfathered in after fulfilling 20 years of service. So, if you've completed 20 years of active service and retire from the fire department or ambulance corps, that exemption will continue on your behalf. So, then the question is, we can have it just continue until that individual is no longer with us, and then it would go away. We can have it continue for that individual and their spouse as long as they remain unmarried, for as long as either of them shall live. Or there is, the third option is, if the individual has five years of service and is unfortunately killed in the line of service, in the line of duty, that that would automatically sort of grandfather their spouse in for the duration of their life. So, those are sort of the three options for the, those individuals that are grandfathered in with having 20 years of service, whether it ends with the individual, whether it passes on to their unmarried spouse, or, God forbid, they were to pass away in the line of duty if we allow it to continue for the spouse in that case. I can share, the town does not currently have this in place. I know they're working on it, so we can't compare ourselves to the town's exemption, but we did look up what Putnam County offers. Putnam County's exemption is two years of service.
Was it two or five?
Did I get that wrong?
I think it was five.
Was it five? I'll look it up again. While you guys discuss it, I'll look it up. I do know that they went with the line of duty clause for 20 years of service.
Yeah, yeah.
It was that option they picked for that.
Did they pick any of the other options, do you know? They picked the--
Just that one. So, you automatically get it for the individual, it's just whether or not it passes on to the spouse. They had it, it only passes on to the spouse if that individual were to die in the line of duty. I'll look up the number of years right now.
So, what are you thinking?
Well, for me, I would say the five years because my feeling is we need these volunteers to stick with the program and get their experience and their wisdom. Two years, you know, doesn't compare to five.
But it's only two years to qualify, and then you have to remain active.
No, I understand that, but I still would like the five years to keep them within the corps, whether it's the, you know, the fire department or the ambulance. They would have to be there a minimum of five years to begin that benefit, and for me, that's very important, to have them there, and, you know, two years--
Well, I don't, the only reason I might think differently is, like, even your first year, there's so much training and so much time you need to spend in order to be active even in one year. You know, your first two years, there's a tremendous amount of work and learning that goes into that time, too, so, you know, but that's just--
So, yeah, I misspoke earlier. The Putnam County is at least five years of service.
Yeah, it did do five, yeah.
I feel we should be consistent with the county and the town.
I agree.
We should not go different than those two.
Yeah.
I agree. I think we should be consistent with years, with the options, as well as--
Is it--
I think we should be consistent with years, with the options, as well as, is it up to 10% or is it 10%? Do we know?
It's up to 10%.
Okay. And with whatever they send, I think we should be consistent with county and the town.
I agree. I agree. Jeanette, absolutely.
I agree. And I think the two or five-year conversation, or anything in between, is exactly what you said, Barbara. They could potentially get their training and then be on their way.
Right.
And then they would, you know, they, they're taking that time that was put into them, that was poured into them and serving somewhere else. I would like to see them be here for five years, show some loyalty, some commitment into the program. And I do agree that we should be consistent with what else is happening around us, for sure.
Now, the county, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeanette, because I know you're very much up on this, they decided that the individual got the bid, passes, then it moves on to the spouse. That's what they saw.
That's the option they have.
And I feel very comfortable with that as well.
Do they give the option for the 20 years?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's part of the law.
Okay, that is part, I was gonna say, we definitely, if they're in it for 20 years, I think they get to keep it.
Oh, for sure, for sure.
For the individual, it's...
So we accept one, two, and three?
It's whether or not it passes on to the spouse.
So did they choose that it passes on to the spouse?
They did.
Okay.
Even if they don't pass in the line of duty after 20 years?
Only in line of duty.
But what if they've been a member?
But what about the 20 years?
What if they've been a member for 20 years?
The 20 years, always.
All of those are 20 years.
For the member, but for the spouse, it's only within the line of duty, I believe.
That, I thought is what the county adopted.
Yes.
I will say that I don't agree with that. I think that if an individual has given 20 years of service, that individual and their spouse are one, and being the wife of a first responder, I 100% make the sacrifice that my husband makes every single day. So I think that that should be something to consider, but again, I don't think that we should be out of line with what others are doing, so I've said my piece about that.
I would agree with that as well.
So what, so that means you are in favor of granting it?
I would be in favor of extending it to the spouse.
In any situation?
In the line of duty with the spouse after 20 years.
Correct.
Unmarried.
All right, so let me qualify.
I think that we should give them all of it.
I think we're blurring these lines. So technically, we could pick two of these three. Obviously, the volunteer 20 years of service exemption follows them for as long as they stay in their primary residence. We're all okay with that, so that's fine. So the next conversation is if they pre-decease their spouse, who remains unmarried and stays in their primary residence, will they qualify, assuming that that volunteer had 20 years of service? So I'm hearing...
What did the Putnam County do for that?
I say yes.
Yes.
That's, okay.
All right, so we're all a yes to number two. So number three is a little bit different, because number three is the line and duty piece. So in order to, for the spouse to qualify, in the case of a line of duty death, that volunteer needs to have at least five years of active service, which sounds like that may be our minimum anyway. And then they, so if they have, in year six, something were to happen, that spouse would receive that exemption for the duration of their, they remain unmarried and living in that primary residence. So I guess that's the third question. We could pick two and three.
And Putnam County did that as well?
Yes.
I also picked two.
I think Putnam just picked three, but I would go with two also.
Jeanette's looking.
I would vote for all three. Like, yes, to all of it. Especially the line of duty.
The exemption is also available to the unmarried spouse of an enrolled member receiving the exemption if he or she was killed in line of duty. In addition, the local option, the exemption may be continued or reinstated for the unmarried spouse of an enrolled member, accrued 20 years of active service or receiving exemption prior to his death. So they approved two and three.
They got all three.
The county has two and three approved.
It's two and three, yeah, that's what I support, right.
Okay.
Yeah.
That works.
Okay. So it sounds like the board's incrementing for all three, and do we have a consensus on the number of years?
Sorry, go ahead.
Five.
I agree with five, be consistent.
To be consistent.
I do have a question regarding the tax exemption piece, up to the 10%. I'm not sure if the county provides 10%, and I just want to make, clarify what that is.
Exemption equals 10% of the assessed value of the property to a maximum of $3,000 multiplied by the latest state equalized rate for assessing the unit for which the property was located.
Okay. And for the...
So it's not 10% of the tax, it's 10% on the value of the house?
Right.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
And should not exceed the 3,000? I just want to be consistent with whatever the county has, that we have the same.
Our calculation was 10% of their assessed value of their home is what equates to that $14 a year. We didn't cap that with anything.
So if that num, if that calculation were to be different for any reason, we would need to know that cost value before making a decision.
But it's, the only difference would be less than that.
Okay, so if it's less than that, that's fine. But if it, for any reason, were to be more than that...
If they counted everybody that's on the list now, you know, then some of those people have not been there five years and would not qualify.
Would not qualify.
Or are not homeowners.
Or they're renters.
And we did it based on 10%, so either way, it would be less.
And it has to be active, so they have to make whatever percentage of the flyers...
I do have a question about the years of service. Is there anything in there about them being consecutive years?
Good question. I didn't, I don't think I've heard that at all.
I think it would be. I, I can't imagine...
It would make sense for it to be, but if it's not, I mean, I don't know if it really makes a difference.
Well, what if, what if somebody goes away to school and then comes back? Like, what if, you know, a teenager becomes a volunteer firefighter, 17, 18?
That's happened.
They go away and they come back. That counts towards their five years.
That's not, no, because they're not the primary owner.
They wouldn't be active while they were away.
They were not, right.
So they have to qualify for all five years?
Yes.
And be the primary, and be the primary owner.
Yeah.
Right.
We've had college students return, you know, be part of the fire department while in high school, then leave, come back and resume.
But that doesn't count towards their five years?
So putting my lawyer hat on?
Not while they're away, no.
For putting my lawyer hat on, I'm gonna say the law reads, this is directly from the law, service for a period of five years.
Doesn't say consecutive.
Doesn't say consecutive.
It does not say consecutive.
So they could go and come back and not...
So I would say if they did three years, left, came back, bought a house, was the primary owner of that house, did two more years, then they would qualify.
Yeah, right, right, that's what I said. Yeah, they would resume. You know, they'd go away and then come back and they would resume the countdown.
So it's not consecutive, doesn't have to be consecutive.
No, no, no.
I don't see anything, the word consecutive in here.
Okay.
I don't either.
Thank you. All right, sounds good.
It sounds good to me.
So just for the public, so what we'll do is, now that we have those answers, we had this discussion in public, we'll have our attorneys prepare a resolution. I know the deadline for this is December, but I would like to get it done, our next meeting in August. So now that we have the answers and we have at least general consensus, we'll put that together and bring it forward as a resolution at our next meeting. Thank you.
And I'd like to, in the efforts to communicate clearly with the town, I'd like them to know what we decided, so if they want to be the same as us, you know, I mean, just, just so that they're aware of what we decided. I'd like them, you know, send it to them, you know, to Jackie or...
Okay. When I went to the board meeting this past week, and the public comment, I did mention we were discussing this, so...
Good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there any need for communication or special communication of this decision to the community, and what does that look like?
There's how many days?
So that we're, you know, the correct narrative is presented.
There will be, I'm sorry.
There has to be a public hearing, notice to the community, which is just the newspaper.
I figured a public hearing with this, yeah.
Okay. Do we feel that that is sufficient notification?
Well, we would post right on, on our site, that there is a public hearing, like we did with the code of conduct and the others. And...
Okay.
Dr. Luft, would you communicate the board's, you know, decision, well, it's not a decision, but our agreement tonight to the fire department and ambulance corps?
Yeah, no, certainly, we have contact people at the fire department and the ambulance corps, that's not the issue. I think what Crystal's asking about is notifying the general community.
I don't want $14 to become $14 million.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. Yeah, you're right, you're right.
That number doesn't sit well with us.
Just proactive rather than reactive.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I think any, any change, whether it's one cent or $14 million, should be very well communicated with our particular community.
Maybe you can go out in the newsletter?
But that won't be, when's our next newsletter?
I mean, there's one coming out.
I agree that whenever...
Like this week?
Can go out on the district social media, can go out in an interview, on the public, whatever, you know. It stinks that we don't have a, you know, a town newspaper, or like...
Yeah, I know.
A radio station.
Well, we get the public notice, I don't know that we can get it in a newsletter, but if we get the public notice, when we have that together, we'll, we'll find other ways to get that public notice out.
Well, the PCNR, you would use that to advertise, right?
The paper's the easy part, but I'm saying, we'll find other ways to get that same public notice out.
Okay.
More, other than just the printed in the paper.
Okay.
Whether we do another newsletter, which would go to the same group of people anyway.
There were 200 subscribers to that newsletter, on the 8th of July, by the way.
Yeah, I know. Most of them pick it up at town hall.
So we, we will figure out how else to get that information out, anyway we can, to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, so now we're gonna move on to new business.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Jacqueline Levine to the, as the assistant superintendent of curriculum, instruction, and human resources to serve a three-year probationary appointment in the 10-year area of assistant superintendent of curriculum, instruction, and human resources effective July 6, 2025 through July 5, 2028, and authorize the superintendent of schools to enter into a salary letter of agreement with Ms. Levine. Ms. Levine holds the following professional certifications: school district leader, early childhood 8 through 12, and, oh, I'm sorry.
B.
B through 12. That doesn't mean born.
It means birth.
Birth, birth through 12.
From birth.
Sorry. And childhood ed 1 through 6.
Second, questions or comments?
Rest assured, this is the same Jackie Levine we currently employ. We did not fire her and hire someone else by the name of Jacqueline Levine, to do a different job. But Jackie will be taking on additional responsibilities with the retirement of Natalie, and with those additional responsibilities, we'll be changing her title. Thank you.
I think that she will have the longest title on a card, like, it won't fit on a business card. It's like, do you want to give her another job? Do we give her another job, make it a little bit longer? Anyway, we are grateful that she's moving up into this position, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? We will put on our official shoes.
Congratulations, well deserved.
If you were there, then we were gonna hug you.
Jeremy, nice to meet you, looking forward to working with you.
Outstanding, Jackie.
Welcome to the family.
Yes.
I'd say Jackie has big shoes to fill, but one of Natalie's shoes are in a boot, so...
That's true.
All right.
I told her she needs to wear sneakers. Okay, number two, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to change the appointment of Connor Pousst in the civil service competitive class title of computer support assistant to a 1.0 FTE effective July 1, 2025, at the middle school on step two of the CSEA salary schedule. Mr. Pousst is currently serving his 52-week probationary period from November 13, 2024 through November 12, 2025.
Second, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? The resolution passes. He also is going to have big shoes to fill, but I was glad to hear that Laura's gonna come back to help out too, so. Okay, number three, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Alyssa Arnett to a one-year leave replacement position as a general education teacher at the elementary school effective September 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, or sooner at the discretion of the Board of Education, on step one BA of the PVFT salary schedule. Ms. Arnett holds childhood ed 1 through 6 and students with disabilities 1 through 6 initial certifications.
Second, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? The resolution passes. Number four, please.
Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to retire policy 5300 and approve the first reading and waive a second reading of revised and amended policy 5300 as per document number 214-25 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Resolution passes. Number five, please.
Resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the 2025-26 district-wide safety plan as per document 217/25 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting, as well as adopting the building-level safety plans for the elementary, middle, and high schools.
Second, questions or comments?
I do have a question. Were parents involved in the process of building the safety plan?
We have parents that sit on the district safety committee, so yes, as well as our consultants.
Very good, thank you.
If you're looking on the, for the district-wide safety plan, you will not see building-level plans because they are confidential.
Right, right, that's correct.
Good point. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? The resolution passes. I'd like to now open it up to the public to speak on any topic.
Thought it was leftover ice cream from the field day.
Keep bringing beer into the building.
I hope it's chip waffles.
I love chip waffles.
Hello, my name is Joe Ferraro, and after many, many subcommittee meetings about ice pops, or ice cream, or bubbles...
All right.
We decided to go with bubbles. Because I know how much Sam loves the bubbles.
I love them.
But there's a lot to celebrate. I want, you know, I worked dozens of years with Natalie and with Maureen and with the promotion of Jackie, there's a lot to celebrate, and I wanted to take this time...
That is so cool.
...to thank Natalie for all the work that she has done. I also, you know, I want to, you know, Pat Bolino, you're a very lucky man, you should thank your lucky stars, you've got Maureen Bolino. I'm gonna miss her a lot. Jackie, I'm looking forward to seeing what you do for the district. So I just wanted to say, it's a good time to celebrate, it's the end of the year, we're about to hit the 4th of July. Enjoy, and Putnam Valley is thriving in many, many ways, and I'm very happy to be part of any of this experience. That's all I have to say, enjoy.
Outstanding.
That's a first go.
Janet's not gonna be happy.
Did you trick us with the bubbles? You thought, we thought it was ice pops.
We are expecting that at every last board meeting we go to. We got bubbles for you.
Look how many there are.
They're all, look at this. Oh, wow.
I planned three meetings ago, I knew it was coming. I feel like I'm hallucinating.
It is. They're sort of like.
They're all over.
It's kind of like a Willy Wonka moment.
Now we know what to get Sam's retirement gift.
Oh, look at this. Oh, now that is cool.
Nobody can beat that. Anybody else?
He should have bought that at the shopping mall for me.
Lighten things up a little bit.
Wow. Thank you, Joe.
Upcoming meetings? We'll get.
It's hard to transition from.
The bubbles are distracting, Dr. Luft.
So our, our next meeting is scheduled for July 1 at 8:00 a.m. It's our, the board reorg and business meeting. So how we start the year. And the following meeting is not until August.
You'll miss us.
I'll miss you. I'm watching Sam grab bubbles and try to harden up concentrate.
Board member discussions of any topic?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I want to thank the PTA for all the terrific activities they planned for our, our school children, especially the elementary. They go above and beyond. Just outstanding. And our district owes a lot to those volunteers at every turn. Thank you, PTA. Also Natalie and Maureen, you both are going to be sorely missed. And Maureen, as I said months ago, you were a big support when I first started here and at the high school. And I'll never forget that. And you've been a good friend through all these years. You will be missed. And you too, Natalie. We used to really have fun in those admin meetings, didn't we? And finally, I want to thank the parents who constantly show up for their children. The large majority of them are able to do that for graduations or activities or events. We have a great community here. And I'm moved every time I attend one of the events and see the parents there in awe of their children. That's it.
So that's a good one. Actually, I think I left it off my list because it happened today. But the middle school through the PTA had their minute to win it field day event today. And I know Irene was running around like a lunatic trying to coordinate that across four different locations indoors. I know we hoped for 25 volunteers. I think she ended up at 11. So it was very chaotic for those 11 parents who volunteered to come in and help make that happen. But without those volunteers, it wouldn't have happened. So I do want to, again, thank the PTA, Irene, and those other members that took the time to come in and make that happen today.
Yes, I agree.
I just want to second some of the things that Sam said. The graduations in every school were absolutely beautiful. We were blessed with the most tremendous high school graduation I think I have ever been a part of, and I have sat through quite a few of them. And it was really just very special. I will say that I, I would even venture to say that this graduation was probably the best that has ever been because it was so intimate. And it was so great to see families in the stands. It was packed. It was just wonderful. People coming, sitting on the hill just to be a part of it. It was just great. There is a lot of work that goes into all of these end-of-year events, whether it's field day, whether it's moving up ceremonies. And the level of excellence to which we do these things is just so incredible. And I want to thank everyone that took part in it. It's not easy. It's hectic. It's exhausting. The heat makes it that much more exhausting. But everyone did a really beautiful job representing who we are as a district. And I thought it was a fantastic way to just end, and close out this school year. I would just ask, and Dr. Luft and I spoke about this, that if we do venture into another heat wave, that we just kindly remind parents that we do not have air conditioning on our buses, so that parents have enough time to make an informed decision about whether or not they want to drive and pick up their children from school. It was really hot this week.
Yes, it was.
And if you've ever sat on a cheese bus, as we call them, in the middle of 105-degree weather, it is not pleasant. I know that some, some families were not completely content with the condition in which their children arrived to their houses. But I think if, if we know ahead of time, if we can, just remind parents. That would be fantastic, so that they can make an informed decision. And I would just also ask, if possible, if school trips could maybe be a little bit earlier in June, as opposed to the very end of June. I know why it's done. Trust me, I get it. But it, it causes a little bit of stress when there's a heat wave on the last week of school, and we're, we're really not wanting to take that trip away from children. I myself, as a parent, found myself trying to figure out the balance between telling my child he couldn't go for his own safety and trying to figure out how to keep him safe to let him go. And so it was a little bit of a challenge for some parents to have to be in that situation. So maybe we can just do them a little bit earlier in June, just to stop.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Well, if you could predict the weather in New York, you could make a lot of money.
That's your job. I'll leave that to you.
Because we've had hot weeks early in June.
We've had them in April.
We've had snow in May.
And we've had storms. You know, I mean, it is really hard to predict.
It's hard, yes. I agree.
One thing that I would like to add about that, I know that I had communicated directly with Crystal the night before the, our sons were going to bounce. And she, you know, she asked me if I was sending them. I was all for it. I'm really, I'm happy that the kids were in school, you know. I totally agree with Dr. Luft.
Yeah.
In that the kids are coming to a safe, air-conditioned space. We have no idea what is going on in these children's homes. I, for one, lost power on one of the days, one of the gazillion degree days. So I'm happy that the kids were in school and safe.
Absolutely.
However, I did find out that one of the school nurses might, may not have been going. And I think that if we have the ability, especially during those really hot days, if the kids are going on those really hot buses, it would be really great if we were able to allow the nurses, a nurse, not all of them, but a nurse to go, just in case there was something for the heat.
Yeah, that's good.
So the issue, we do have one floating nurse, and that one floating nurse was on a trip, just not the bounce trip. They were on the other trip because there was a student who has a medical deed, right? A student who has a monitor that needs to have access to a nurse to monitor it. So we unfortunately don't have two floating nurses, otherwise we could have sent one with each. But now we're talking about pulling nurses out of schools where there's students who could also, who also have medical issues who need that level of supervision, to send them on a bus without any students who have diagnosed medical issues. So it's just a matter of where, where we put those people, wherever they, yeah, wherever they, makes the most sense.
Yeah, I would also suggest, if possible, it's not always possible, and the real estate on the calendar in June is very challenging. But if we could spread out the field trips so that there are not multiple field trips happening on a given day, I think that was one of the challenges, was that the fifth and the seventh grade were going somewhere. The seventh grade had a student that required a nurse, so therefore the fifth grade wasn't necessarily able to have a nurse. Another just question that I have is, you know, it's a really great thing to do, elementary and middle school field trips, when regions are happening at the high school, because there's fewer students in the building that have to be monitored. So the high school nurse might be able to be dispensed to a different location to support students. So just ideas, throwing it out there, this June with this last week of weather was extremely challenging for all schools in the area. So I 100% get it. And I thank the district for remaining true to children, putting children first, and making sure that they were in school these past two weeks. Like Dr. Luft said, there were many districts that closed or that closed early. And we did not have to do that, inconveniencing parents at the last minute to find childcare. So thank you to all of our staff who made it happen, and for the administration for making that decision.
Agreed.
I have one more comment about, just about inconveniencing working parents. I would suggest for next year, that if we are going to make half-days, that we make the choice for the half-days, the meeting after spring break. I think it is really hard. And one of the things that I ran on actually last year, and I forgot about, because in the middle school, there's so many less half-days than the elementary school has, is that I think we need to look at the amount of half-days. And I think we need to really evaluate whether or not, if we had enough days in school, you know, we have to do 180, I believe. If we had that amount, I think we had 182, that perhaps instead of doing two half-days, we do one full day of school and then, just thoughts, and then not, so that the teachers get a whole full day to move their classrooms and et cetera. Just something so that working parents don't have to take off two half-days. It's very difficult to take off two half-days.
Especially.
Or communicating it earlier, so that Children's Center is an option. Because it wasn't communicated early enough, Children's Center wasn't able to work it out today.
I just want to say to Natalie and to Maureen, congratulations on your retirement, and wishing you both the very best. You will be missed.
Absolutely.
And Jackie, congratulations on your new role. Happy to see you. I want to thank Natalie and Jackie and Grace for, and Jeremy, of course, for attending all of the moving up ceremonies and all of the activities in the school. I know that, you know, at the different hours, it's hard, but you guys were there. And that was appreciated by everyone. Along with that, the graduate, high school, all of the graduations were great. Especially, one thing I always loved about the high school is seeing the teachers that attend on their own free will. I just love to see that participation and how much the kids enjoy that also. So I want to thank, shout out to those teachers and staff members.
Loved that baseball field. I really did, Dr. Luft.
Keep planting that seed.
It's got competitive. It's competitive now.
Have to think about them. Come on.
I, I would be remiss if I didn't say that the way that Putnam Valley, and this is a testament to you and, and to Jackie, and of course to Dr. Luft, the way that we wrap around our students who are differently abled is just so beautiful.
Yeah, yes.
And to see students this year graduate and achieve things that at maybe some point they weren't sure they would, was absolutely beautiful. And then to see, and I still get chills when I think about it, the students, support those students the way that they did. It, the community that we have is just so beautiful. And that is, that tone is set by the administration. So thank you so much for loving all of our children, for searching high and low for their CPSC services, for doing all the things that need to be done so that every child feels loved, loved and welcomed, and that they have access to the very best resources and education possible. And, and a big part of that is also supporting their families. So thank you for doing all of that. It was just truly beautiful to see that happen this year.
Well, we kind of take it for granted because it's just normal for us. But my niece was up, she was a teacher in Florida for 26 years. She's now teaching law at a college, University of West Florida or something, I don't know, anyway. But she said she was like so impressed with the fact that, at, you know, that, that student, what they talked about, they did talk about the students being smart and doing well in their classes and all that kind of stuff. But they talked a lot about empathy and kindness. And you could see it in, in the, in the kids who are helping other kids if they needed help or nudging them across, you know, like, stand up, sit down, you know, whatever they needed. Just in general, she felt that, and that's, from the outside, she's like, I just, like, I'm just so amazed and impressed. So it's like, well, that's really cool. So I was really glad to see that. Because, and sometimes we do take it for granted because it's what we expect. And not everybody does, so. Anything else? I also, I told Grace that I was, it's nice to see everybody in our administration who's making decisions for children, involved in watching children move from one place to another. Because that also doesn't happen in a lot of districts. So, you know, I think we're really blessed.
We are.
Okay, we are going to move to an executive session for one personnel matter.
So move.
Second.
So we are convening an anticipated executive session. There will be no work done after that. Good night and have a safe summer.
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, all in favor, aye.
Oh, all in favor, sorry.